Okay. Let's call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, April 19, 2016. Commissioners reports received the files.
We have the March 2016 calendar piece filed and the March 2016 treasures reconciliation report filed.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings.
Just a bit comedy, Lee.
I don't know.
Ain't here out here for a while, you're in comedy. Campo tomorrow. What do you think was last night? You need to show up so they can see the pictures, make you look taller. Chamber connections tomorrow night. I think that's about it, come next week.
We have a NID meeting tonight with the residents of Brush Creek.
I've got CAP Region Board Meeting tonight. We're gonna adjourn at 7:30 for Carl Vogel's visitation. Home Savings Bank Board Meeting tomorrow. CAP Region Reviolation March tomorrow. Sunday is Lauren Francis's 66th birthday.
He's retired?
Yep, he is.
I got a deal for him next week to buy the rat.
Thursday, yes. Supposed to come along and take care of you then.
That same night is something else?
Thursday night, yeah.
Oh, we got another thing for the welfare association, so you gonna ball me around the whole night? Because I might need half a buck for that one. That's a Thursday.
That'd be silver shopping.
I will help.
You said we had a long agenda.
So much good.
Okay. Let's keep moving, okay. Bids and contracts. Bid renewal, 2014-19 renewal to inmate welfare products, Bob Barker.
We bid this in 2014. Bob Barker at the time was lowest and best for things like toothbrush, soap, underarm things like that. The Sheriff's Department's happy with them and they don't have an increase this year. So I'm just looking for you guys to verbally agree that we're not gonna revisit that this year, let's all leave it at this one.
Okay. Do all these spend at once?
Sheriff, what?
Okay, 2014-20 renewal to inmate food services.
No increase from whenever it was bid. This is the third year, they tell that it'll be on management.
Okay. EMS Lennon to laundry.
Clean healthcare, no increase.
Okay.
Sheriff's Department vehicle maintenance, no increase there either.
Got a contract assigned for all those, right?
For the bottom three, yes.
Okay. Do them one at a time here. I move that we renew the inmate welfare products contract with Bob Barker.
You say the bottom three or the top three?
We'll do them one at a time, not wait. Move out on them, or you wanna do them all at once?
Did you have Bob Barker's?
Bob Barker does not have a contract.
Yeah, that's what she said, the bottom three, yeah. So let's skip that one and go to the next three, get separate time.
Okay. All right, I move that we renew the inmate food services with ABL management.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I move that we renew the EMS Lennon to laundry service with clean healthcare.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we renew the Sheriff's Department vehicle fleet maintenance with all the top votes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bid awards, 2016-20 pipes.
Well, we got a bid. The recommendation is to award pipe performance corrugated polytopenine pipe to HD Supply Waterworks.
Might be you guys spending on these at any one time.
It just depends when we come in with the, what projects we do, Chris. The one that we still don't have bids on is our concrete pipe. We've been working with Chris and trying to figure out if we need pipe like that, what we're gonna do this summer.
The reason I ask is, I mean, if we're only spending less than $6,000 in 90 days, I mean, we can do phone bids and go get phone bids for what?
What happens when you have, especially the larger, you can hit that pretty quick. If you have a long three foot or four foot pipe, it doesn't take very much length to do it. We've got caught in the past, let's put it that way, where we did bid it, it just seems like it works better. We haven't bid on it. I'm not sure why we're not getting bids. I know there's companies out there that do it, so.
So are these good bids or not?
HD's where we've been getting it in the past and they're good bids. I mean, verticals, fine, so.
So the prices are good?
Yeah.
That's frustrating that we can't get bids on pipes. I agree.
We give them a deal, I guess there's more competition out there, they pay attention. We were gonna try and call the concrete pipe and I had people, I think it got done, so. I know the one Vico I've just recently bought after both of them sold. Fred Weber locked in and I, we expect to see if we can get a better response out of Fred Weber's operation and what we have in Vico.
Why do you think we only get one bid or no bids? I mean, is it all paperwork that they gotta fill out, or, I mean, do they just have to send in a sheet with the price?
They just have to send the sheet back in with the prices, is all it is. They're just getting on their radar to get them to do it. I think a little bit is delivery, cost of delivering St. Louis or KC or Springfield. It just makes it uneconomical that they're not able to be the largest part of it. That's why you see this one bid. No contact on the metal side, they'll ship from St. Louis, but there, he was at their prices, they are higher than metal workers.
A lot of times it's been my experience that TNC and St. Louis will be more competitive with their prices now they'll have to add some freight, so, I mean, I would think they've been close.
We had a deal a few years ago where Skirlock out of Springfield was the only bidder on the concrete pipe. They were, price wise, they were higher than Vico, but we had to accept them. Didn't work with it, it's their delivery cost was what related us down to our. That's good. We don't have contracts.
I move that we, I move that we award the plastic pipe to HD Supply Waterworks.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Swift Road in Boise, really. Road gravel road upgrade project number 2012-902-1 and 2012-903-1.
We open bids Friday on this project and very favorable, a little bitter, it was lower than the estimated cost as well as under our alleged amount for the year. Don Steer excavating, their bid was $2,297,593.84. And we've discussed this bid with the owners and they're very happy. Could be a little bitter and anxious to get started on it, but we recognize we're in the project, the Don Steers excavating, got the amount that I said earlier.
Is this, is four bidders on this one?
There's four bidders, we've only had four plan holders and really, that's probably what I expected. There's a few others out of town that might have come down, but these are all local companies and I expect to get a decent bid out of these four and it's a good job, so. How many miles up? About 3.9 miles. It's a pretty elaborate project, quite a bit of project excavation. Three bridges, slash box over on the project, western rail around those. It's all in one project, start to finish. We'll have that fall by the end of the year, so.
So it's all done this year?
Yes. That's a commitment we made to the property owners down there when we couldn't hear the ride play last year, that we went to a two-year project and said, well, if we're successful this year, we'll build it all.
That's good.
Yep.
I move we award to Don Steer next week.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Good contract, good treaty. I move that we sign the contract for Swift Road in Boise, really Road with Don Steer next week.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Contracts, 2016-08 roof replacement, health department, fall season.
I move that we sign the contract with the whole season's roofing for the health department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
2016-08 roof replacement annex with Missouri Builders.
I move that we sign the contract with Missouri Builders for the annex roof.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Signing the deed of conveyance for the OSH city lots.
I move that we sign the deeds for the OSH city lots.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
What Chelsea's really good things?
How many did you add on that?
I sent it to you guys, what, six?
Who did you send it to?
3,260.
I got your emails going spam.
Why comes it late, they must be going out, what day, my Thursday? I don't know. I got a feeling you corrupt me.
I'm on the flight.
Okay.
We got accounts payable today?
Yep.
I have a meeting on there?
No.
I have a little deal with those. You going to do them, Chris?
I will. I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You said this was long.
My son said it was long.
We're not done yet.
He just had his birthday, did you get my gift yet?
I'm sure it aren't coming for late. I fired a couple warning shots, I was tired. Need any visitors?
Law enforcement file service update request. You're not writing any of this down?
No, I'm tape recorder.
I don't know if you guys wanna look at it, it's down the leads on the toll. Basically, they're, they have one main file server over there that's getting old, we wanna get it replaced. The quote I got for WWT with some, you had to put some pieces together, but it was 859701. I am getting a requote because I think we can knock off a few more dollars by getting one processing core in instead of two, but the quote will not exceed the 859701.
We originally got this approved through capital improvements to 4,500, but that was back in August when it reported it then, so.
Yeah, and it was pulled from the year before, so it's gone up a lot since. It's same, same machine, they're just expensive now, so. This is gonna be, we haven't dealt with the audit yet that we have coming up, but one of the findings of our IT auditor was we have a lot of Windows 2008 servers that will need to be replaced, and this is, this is one of them, so this will go along with the lead 8700 findings.
Well, we're, what we're requesting is to remove the money from contingency into capital improvements to be able to offset the cost of 4,500. We don't have it.
Do we have the body cam?
No, we don't have it because the body cam server's gonna be more expensive. We're gonna be able to cover the cost on that because of the money that we have in capital expense, but we don't have it. No.
Okay, so what, you need just approval to go forward? Because I mean, you don't have a contract, I mean.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just, it's just a purchase.
You have to say it's a transfer, that you have to sign. What I gave you was a copy of what their capital request was to get me to come to the idea.
Is this for a new file server, right? And what was the price?
It's, I'd say $8,600. And hopefully less, I mean, like I said, I didn't get the quote back, but I'm trying to get it less right now because I, we went over a little bit more fine-tuned, we saw that we could maybe get a little bit less feature. And it's got, this is certainly nice, but we could probably get a lot of them lost. But we don't have a price yet, so I don't know. Could be less than four, I don't know.
Well, you'd be seeing a transfer, about four or five thousand.
I move that we replace the file server, let the price not exceed $8,600.
All in favor?
We got backups for that then, backups to backups? So then, how come the GIS kept going down in the city?
Because, we don't know. They managed to, the city had a situation where they had like four hard drive fail.
Yeah.
And once you do that, it doesn't matter what you've got there, it's down.
So is that just bad luck that that all happened at one time, or is there no way?
We don't really know, but, I mean, it is exceedingly bad luck.
It was down a lot.
Yeah, it was a whole, well, it was, it was over a whole week down. You know, and they prioritize how they brought it back and GIS was.
I have to go, thank you. We're, we're, stop it, I'm not wearing a tie.
We, you know, we tried to keep an eye on it. These pretty hogs with hard drive fails, you get a light and says, I'm not happy.
And I understand they go down at times, so that's why I was talking to the administrators and trying backups to the backups and stuff to keep something like that from happening. I mean, it just, it happens, so.
Yeah.
I was just making sure that it doesn't happen here.
Well, they just brought in.
You don't know they won't have.
They brought in a new GIS director too.
Yeah, I don't have anything to do with the server.
For all their Melissa, Melissa was it.
That don't matter, as long as the server's still up, it don't matter.
Yeah, I don't think the city had anybody in charge. I think their IT.
But that don't matter, you don't have to have somebody there pushing buttons, as long as the server's still up, we can access it. So the manager had nothing.
No, we don't really know, I mean, it wasn't our deal, but, you know, not to say something catastrophic can't happen, though, we hopefully have gotten our protections.
I do have a copy of the letter here that the city sent to the board of realtors at all.
You guys need anything else?
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, the Brooks Park grant application. Talking to Jill this morning, she had just, we received it yesterday, and she said there's like 40 pages that she.
Forty pages I received this morning?
Yeah, that she needed to kind of review.
I've also, the order and letter were sent yesterday. And looking at the order, I've got a problem with some of the language, because I think it binds the county in perpetuity, and I think it could be better worded than that. Say if a tornado would hit the park.
When does it have to be submitted?
For Friday.
So Larry, Larry and I've been, Larry Bishop and I have been talking this morning. I easily can get through this this week, and so we, I'm suggesting that perhaps you approve them submitting the grant application pending my review and recommendations. Does that sound?
Sounds good.
And I will fix the order and have Sam sign it, if you all wanna look at it or what.
I'm good, you're good.
Okay.
You need to know anymore about the grant?
Basically doing this to, for playground equipment.
Right. Yeah, I was, really, I read the application that we got yesterday, and that was pretty good.
This would be the playground equipment would be.
Make sure you get some, some toss swings, because I had, soon as our House and Sales tax passed, I had somebody in the next day going, you need swings for babies.
And I'm like, we got that. And I will need to talk to Jill about what she heard. What is that donations for? Toss swings if they wanna donate to it. Jill's concerned on, working on the resolution. Be like Columbia and have other parks around here.
And we're also invited to Kim's, my story school park, fun park.
Why don't they all have it on Terra Road, so you can see how the road is. Get you to take it for it.
I think that's in the Eastern District, I think.
You have all of it. I'll be my battery's the ender, whoever his name is, Bernie, Weekend at Bernie's.
He's dead.
I move that we approve, or I move that we sign the grant application pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, discussion regarding the Cole County Health Department, 100th anniversary.
So we were finally able to get our committee meeting together, and we have set the anniversary event for August 13th. We would like to do proclamations, I guess we'll have that at 8:45, and the one mile and five K will start at 9:00 AM. And we plan to have, it's probably gonna be a fun run because the timing and chip systems are pretty expensive, so instead of paying for that, we'll probably just do a fun event, have a timer, so it's not the chips, the drop issues, and actually a personal timing. And then behind the courthouse, we plan to have fitness events for kids, we're soliciting community partners to run those fitness events, so kids will do a series of exercises that add pass to 100, and they will be entered for prizes, so that we're gonna ask those community partners to participate in those prizes. Kristy has graciously agreed to be my co-chair for the event, and the proceeds that we raised from the event will go to the United Way for our base that we can't beat. We're gonna charge a $25 entry fee for the 5K t-shirts, our t-shirts will come out of that, which we think we can give them between $7 and $10, so the rest of the entry fee will go to the United Way.
As entered the 100th anniversary, the Council of Quotient has started the health department. So Christie and Council of Post did help do this program. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago. We've come a long way since then.
Yeah, they had a TV society and they bought a nurse for the community, or bought a nurse, body car for the community nurse to make call visits.
We've come a long way.
So we all get the proclamations together, our, all three of you should be there for the proclamation and to run, of course, Howdily was suggesting that you were on her run. He thought he would do like a 300 yard sander.
It's only 300 yards long?
That's key what's gonna do. August 6.
It is like quarter mile, you're gonna run a quarter mile.
What's your feeling?
You know, like the, the Oktoberfest.
Our interest is gonna go up.
Those are t-shirts for, that they raise money and they get sponsors to help cover the cost, so you, we could maybe get some candidates who are running for office or something to help sponsor t-shirts.
Right, yeah, we put your name on the badge and the, and the sponsors for the booze crew, put their name on it back there.
So we could get some sponsors.
I was gonna have to fill it, I already have the date on it.
What's the date on that?
We're gonna try to get this fixed.
August 13th.
How can I plan for that, it's always off. I don't wanna be doing that.
The tipper and October downtown are pretty crazy, so. We're gonna ask the high school football team to come on, I don't know if they will, be four days.
What time was it, Chris?
We're gonna do proclamations at like 8:45 and the race at 9:00.
Do we need to be there?
Six forty, no, probably like eight.
Six forty-five, with bells on. Hey, can we do shotgun start? I'll pop shotgun. I'm there. So what time, nine-ish, or you're gonna let us know, just?
You can be there by 8:30 though.
I just got playing the old Baker Health Department anniversary, something I thought I'd never seen.
Health front?
Anniversary.
We had much discussion about what to name the event.
I live a good clean living, my friend.
It's, you know, we're, we like the get bid, don't bid, you know, things like that, but we decided, you know, we'll tell them to be 100. It's not just about getting bid, it's about the management, it's just management, getting your shooting.
So it's a 5K or a what, 300 yard run?
One mile.
One slash 5K?
You can go one mile or you can go three miles, it's your choice.
You know, it'd be cool, cause that's like a hot dog eating contest, and then a one mile.
That's why we're not doing color, I don't want to say anything, I'm sure I'll have played a hot dog.
But the health department could have a team.
Yeah.
The health department, EMS could have it, come up with.
EMS is gonna do this.
Because Colin, I think, is starting on that, that weight loss.
Yeah, they're gonna, we're gonna, they, we have a meeting of the wellness getting going to, and we're gonna start that, and the ending event will be the 5K. And Melissa's been working on the rounds, we'll start it in the courthouse, and that will be the only, you know, the downtown business.
Very good. Thanks, Chris. Any other issues? I've got some mail. Department of Natural Resources to Father Joe Carl, Vicar General, St. Francis Xavier Catholic Church and Rectory is listed in National Register of Historic Places as of March 22nd. Certificate to recognition of this honor will be prepared forward to you. I got a letter from the City of Jefferson to Ms. Stone with the Board of Realtors. Thank you for your letter dated August 1st, from work regarding the Midmo GIS system. We apologize for any inconveniences experienced by the unusual core server failure in March. System has been moved to a more robust platform to avoid future issues. On behalf of the Midmo GIS team, we would like to thank you for your continued support for the service we provide to our business partners of the Jefferson City and Cole County area communities. So that's from Marc Ullor, who's their new Director of Ponticants and I P S. And I got a letter from Missouri Clean Energy District inviting us to nominate a candidate to serve a three-year term as Director on their Board of Directors. Everybody, they can apply through our, online for, pick any if they want, or somebody else wants to be on the Missouri Clean Energy District Board.
Does that's why I heard that certain thing just compared to that?
I'm really sure how, Tony, I know we've got some other, that Garnet Farm out there on 179 nearby Marion, they just listed that a couple of months ago. And I think, I think there, they did apply, so I'm assuming that Francis Xavier did apply for it, and then they do all this, this.
Surprised that they wanted to.
I guess if you got, you know, we've got a lot of buildings downtown that are on the National Register too, so they need that plaque.
Right.
Doesn't get you anything, but it's, it's.
No, but it restricts you and, you know, you ever had something that happened or whatever?
I don't think it actually restricts.
I don't think so.
Unless you take federal money for it.
Yeah.
It does.
Cuts the old jails off there.
What Jeff says is true.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm writing this down. My work is down here today.
That listing on the National Register does not place restrictions or limitations on the use or maintenance of a property.
Where, sometimes the benefit is tax credits.
Yeah, but they're not taxable anyway.
Well, I don't know who this entity is, I'm just saying in general.
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
That's the only mail I've got. Any other issues?
I did receive a certified mail that I scanned and sent you guys yesterday on the public hearing for the Chairman of Cole Town. I think it's May 31st, at 5:30 at City Hall.
Yeah, Larry and I are on that tip condition, so. We went to that meeting and they had not filed the notices for the meeting, so we couldn't do anything other than elect a chairman and a co-chair, and then we set a date for May 31st, I think.
Couple more hours, what else we got? We got something to talk about. Sure. Talk about my perfect day.
You got it. Okay.
It's coming up. It's Monday, April 25th, it's not too hot, not too cold.
Perfect day?
Yes, haven't you seen Ms. Congeniality? We're about to have movie night. Remember they asked her? Remember they asked her, describe your perfect day?
April twenty-fifth, it's not too hot, not too cold.
You're gonna have to wear a leg slip.
Nice, there you go. See? Thank you, at least someone. I had some funny dreams lately, but it goes without a word. Talking about your ones.
Well, I, I want to commend Jeff too for entertaining our, our visitor, visiting, uh, county officials when they come into Jeff's city, because I got some pictures and he was a, a very generous host with, to these young ladies.
Grilled steak, you missed it.
I wouldn't have either.
I didn't want to meet you at your home. Your wife looks at me funny when I walk in the store anyway.
She looked really funny.
Maybe it's you she's looking at.
It has nothing to do with your show.
Man, it was Saturday, you missed that, but I appreciate.
I heard it was a very long affair.
Yeah, as long as I was there, it was like this. I had to, I bothered them. But it's a good crowd. They had what, nine hundred and something last night, Chris?
Yeah. Yeah, two fifty.
Yeah, that was pretty good. It was entertaining. We gotta get you a bumper sticker, apparently not. You gotta park right up in front of church too.
We'll have to find one for him. We'll just put it on for you.
Don't worry about it.
I was thinking, you know, I, like Leonard at Easter had one of his vehicles parked in front of the Macula Conception and then the next week he had it over at Saint Peter's. So I think, you know, maybe he needs to get a vehicle like that, well, spray painted with a blue and a paint.
When I was sixteen, I had to buy my own cars. First car was like that.
I, uh, I, I think that would be very fitting. Do everything else.
Yeah, we should let the rest of y'all go instead of watching.
We have a motion to, uh, reassess until fourth of June.
Second.
Call in favor?
All right.
Eric, what'd your boy think of the bumper sticker?
He thought that was pretty funny.
Did you think what he said?